So, I would like to open tonight's Georgetown Planning Board meeting. March 14th, 2018, we're third floor conference room. It's about four after seven minutes, three vouchers, correspondence, two public hearings, planning office, and a couple, several member concerns at the end of the night. So with that, begin with the minutes of February 28th, 2018.
I move to approve the draft meeting minutes for the February 28th Planning Board meeting as written.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the minutes of February 28th, 2018. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye. Five, zero. Vouchers, there are three.
Three vouchers is presented on our package and is cited on this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I would love to second that if you were to break those out.
Sure. I move to approve the voucher for Staples Office Supplies, amount of $130.69.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the Staples voucher in the amount of $130.69. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye. You just wanted to break it out.
No, the next one. The next one. Humor me. There's methods in my madness.
I move to approve the voucher for Staples in the amount of $52.25.
Oh, second that for discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve Staples voucher in the amount of $52.25. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask, John?
Yeah.
Is the $31.69 for the Staples black wire mesh on this voucher, on this invoice, is that the one we just paid? In this one? Sure looks like it.
I'll check with the NBL.
Yeah. Same number.
Same number.
Yeah. Same number, same price, same description, black wire mesh, five section, black wire mesh, five section.
Sounds like a double.
Yeah.
What is that, a printer that only costs $139?
Yeah, the unfortunate thing is it cost about that much in technical assistance to get it running.
Wait till you buy the cartridges. Anyway, we already paid that.
No.
Unless she bought two.
That's possible. I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I'll check that. Yeah, if we have to bring it back, I'll bring it back for the next meeting.
Want to hold on that?
Well, and so it says the amount of $52.25 and voucher that I'm looking at says $53.25?
Yeah, yeah. Do we want to change?
Do we want to hold that? Pull that one out?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I'm going to withdraw the motion on that voucher.
You already voted on the other one.
The other one stands. That's good.
The other one's good?
Vote one is fine. So the second motion has been withdrawn.
Do we want to pay the rest of that bill? The extended $539?
Do we want to pay the one we're going to return? That's what I would like to know.
The $539 extend out to $21.56?
Why don't we just hold that one? Get clarification.
I think I'd rather just go to the third. Take a motion to approve the voucher for North of Boston Media Group Legal Ads for proposed zoning amendment amount of $416.63.
Second. I missed, no, you. That was you. You beat me. Third square.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded by Mr. Watts, the Honorable Mr. Watts. And any discussion?
My only question is when we, do we have the money in the budget for this set aside and everything?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
No more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Five, yes. Okay, moving on to correspondence. There are five items. One from Newbury, one from Bloxford, three from Rowley. Does anyone have any desire to go into any of those?
Do we note it, Mr. Chairman?
All right. So noted. And then we shall move to public hearings. The first one, which is the zoning amendment for continuous building area.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
If I may, I'd like to...
Read the notice.
Make, yeah, I can read the notice in accordance with provisions of... Do I read the notice or do I make a motion to open the public hearing?
I think you read the notice first and then we open it.
Read it first, then we open?
It's the first one.
Okay. In accordance with provisions of Match General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on 14 March 2018 at 7:00 PM in the third floor meeting room, Georgetown Town Hall, 1 Library Street, Georgetown, Mass. for the purpose of providing information, answering questions, and hearing concerns about a proposal to amend the present definition of continuous building area found in Article 1, General Provisions, Chapter 165-7 definitions of word usage of the town zoning bylaws as most recently adopted. And with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to open the public hearing for said zoning amendment.
Second. Motion has been made and it has been seconded again by the Honorable Mr. Watts.
Feel like you should have won your robe.
I know, really.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. John? As we discussed pretty much beginning of the first of the year, or the first planning meeting of the year, we found that the existing definition for continuous building area was lacking substance, you know, clarity of what should be included, what should not be included. And Harry pointed out at that discussion that it's, it was defined in the negative and that we really shouldn't be defining terms within the zoning ordinance in a negative manner. So with much review and discussion, this is the language that we agreed to previously. And it's up for public hearing tonight and hopefully goes on to become an article for the Springtown meeting.
All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to say? No? Okay, we're all sit there, so bring to the board.
Should we read what the definition is? Just so that's in the record?
Yes, I think so.
On tape?
I think that's a good idea, Harry.
You have such a great reading voice, why don't you...
Hey, look, I already did the public notice, buddy. Spread the load, huh?
We were very, very proud of you two. You did it.
I'm busy signing these vouchers.
So the existing definition for continuous building area reads, "Continuous building area shall not include any freshwater wetland as delineated per Chapter 161 Wetlands Protection, nor any pond or stream." The proposed amended definition for continuous building area reads, "Continuous building area, that portion of a lot comprised exclusively of connected upland and consisting of such upland, square footage, acreage, equal to or greater than the minimum lot size requirement of a zoning district in which the lot is situated. Said upland shall exclude any freshwater wetland as delineated per Chapter 161 Wetlands Protection, and any pond or stream." Any discussion from the members with regards to... A couple signatures here. Okay, seeing no discussion.
Close first or move to approve it first?
I think we approve it first.
No public comment at all?
No public comments. No?
I just, I'm looking at John's notes here. I just switch them? Okay. I move to approve the proposed amending language of the term "continuous building area," Article 1, Section 165-7 definitions and word usage of the zoning ordinance as written, and forward same to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion as a zoning warrant article for the 2018 Springtown meeting.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the proposed amendment language as noted. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move to close the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to amend the existing definition of continuous building area.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to close the public hearing for zoning amendment, continuous building area. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, so that takes care of that one. John, I'm just going to give you this notebook back. That one's not signed.
Okay.
The other two are.
Thank you.
And the zoning amendment for allowing mixed use in the CB zoning district.
Motion to have the clerk read the public notice.
The Honorable Clerk.
The Honorable Clerk.
Thank you very, very much. In accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public meeting on 14 March 2018 at 7:00 PM in the third floor meeting room, Georgetown Town Hall, 1 Library Street, Georgetown, Mass. for the purpose of providing information, answering questions, and hearing concerns regarding a proposed amendment to Section 165B Use Regulation Schedule, Attachment 2:1 Residential Use, by allowing mixed use in the commercial B zoning district via a special permit granted by the town's planning board with mixed use providing for residential use above the first floor of commercial retail space.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on the aforementioned zoning amendment.
Second. Motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the public hearing for mixed use in the CB zoning district. The amendment, Chapter 2. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Aye. And let's see. What we have is the mixed use... So the term "mixed use" is provided in the town zoning ordinance as follows existing definition of mixed use. Mixed use, a single building containing more than one type of land use where the ground floor or street level use of the building is a commercial use and a residential use is only located above the ground floor or street level of the building. That's what we have for the...
Yeah, that's the present definition for mixed use.
Any discussion, folks?
The implication is that here through four, we, what, did not allow mixed use?
Mixed use is only allowed in the CA district, which is the immediate downtown area.
Got it.
Yeah. And the CB district consists of the CVS property and the Crosby's Market, post office, and the service station. And then those properties that are but the south side of Library Street, heading in an easterly direction. If you're familiar, and I'm sure you are, with the GIS maps, most of the CB district on the easterly side of Central Street, behind the existing commercial properties, residential properties, it's all wet. It's one of the, it's part of that big wetland area that extends all the way up to the transfer station area.
Any other discussion?
I'm just thinking, just good thoughts that are coming to my mind as you're saying it. For instance, there's a gas station on the corner.
Yeah.
Would they be able to put an apartment upstairs, that gas station? Question mark.
Well, it'd be per special permit, site plan review, planning board, so it's not a by right thing. They would have to meet all the criteria. That would be a hard one to imagine.
The fire department might have some thoughts about that.
Could be a rehabilitation of the entire site type of thing that could possibly happen in the future.
And in back of that is the next abutting property is the repair shop, auto repair.
Right.
So he would have that option as well?
Yeah.
And Davis Concrete Block, well, I call it Davis Concrete Block, is it still called that? That plaza?
Georgetown Building Supply.
Building Supply, I'm sorry. The Building Supply, that whole plaza, if they chose to put a second floor on, could become apartments.
That would make sense.
Yeah. You'd have to come up with parking and whatnot then, and all that sort of...
Well, it'd be a special permit.
Special permit. There'd be a whole...
Complete review. Complete and total review. Essentially, is this a workaround for the 40I that we could, 40I? Yeah, 40I that we can never seem to get past?
If anything, it was, it was agreed somewhere along the line for the CA district to have the mixed use. And this is a CB district. It's not inconceivable that the CB district could actually be part of the CA district itself, you know? There's not really that much difference. You know, there are immediate residential properties beside most of the commercial properties in the downtown area of the CA district, as well as the CB. You know, it's kind of a mixed residential-commercial area. So it has to pass muster with the planning board.
So let me, let me think of another possibility. Those buildings that do have apartments now, or two-story, or residential, let's say residential. And they want to put a business on the first floor and leave the top as residential. That could be a possibility?
Yeah, yeah. If something's residential now and they, you know, come forward with a site plan and go through the necessary application process, they could...
And regarding your question, we put this in when Nick was here because the 40R was voted down. So we were trying to push for mixed use of the CA, and that's how that, so we just put it as our own amendment.
Yeah.
That's how that happened. Why didn't this be considered as a 40R?
It could. You know, and one of the things that we haven't had a chance to talk about as a board, but I gave you a copy of the letter that I wrote resulting from our last meeting. We did receive a $50,000 economic development grant in working with the Economic Development Committee. I copied everybody here with the letter I wrote right before or at the end of the last meeting. It went on to the Board of Selectmen, and the recommendation is to look at downtown and come up with a new master plan and to focus in on zoning, the possibility for sewer/septic enhancement, traffic, and parking, creating more parking spaces. So that would be updating the downtown master plan. And that's an economic development grant that was offered to the town through the efforts of Senator Tar. So that recommendation from the Economic Development Committee is before the Board of Selectmen right now. Ultimately, they'll make the decision on how that grant is going to be expended, but there's a strong likelihood that'll end up happening, that we're going to focus that money on developing a master plan for downtown. And the zoning is a major part of it. What we're trying to do is to make sure that the downtown in the future does have more sustainability, more opportunity for residential development, as well as commercial development. And one of the big restrictions down there, as everybody knows, is that there's no sewer/septic system capacity down there that would really lend itself for additional restaurants, you know, residential apartments, condominiums, and stuff like that. So, all in an effort to, you know, create a more enhanced economic development potential in the downtown area.
Ironically, if I may.
I'm only thinking of questions that may come up at town meetings because that's... Are you going to be there?
Yes.
Because that's, that's what's going to be thrown out. People that have to think about, depending on what board is sitting at, whatever time, and where you live, how they're going to vote, you know, and understanding that they have to come to the hearings, you know?
People have a right to. I, I, I'm only concerned that, and I guess it's a moot point now. This is a de facto 40R, if you will. We've already, one of the main impetus of the, of the 40I was to get the grant anyway, and it seems as though we have a downtown grant now, so might as well get the effect of it. The only problem is that there were some specific guidelines, especially with respect to preservation of some of the historic properties that would have been incorporated in the 40R. I guess that this board will just have to make sure that those things are taken care of in the special permit process.
Agreed.
And predominantly, the 40R was, was to create housing and to have affordable. So how is the affordable going to fit into this?
Well, this is still, I mean, there is no reason why mixed use won't be under the same constraints that any other unit created in the town, the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw. Someone creates three or more, they will have to provide either an in lieu payment or, what is it, beyond point seven, they have to provide the full, the full apartment. One of the apartments is going to have to be affordable.
Correct.
I think it's a very positive thing. My feeling on this.
The Economic Development Committee unanimously supported this as a, a good ordinance relative to creating more viability of space within the CB.
It creates opportunity where there was no opportunity...
Right.
...to do this actual mixed use.
Well, the big thing is...
Bring people into the town.
Yeah, the big thing is the people that are living there. You know, you're living way up by me. We're not that, we're not going to be that involved with downtown as someone that's living in that area. So that, they're the people that should be paying attention, you know, and come up and, and, you know, especially at town meeting, you know? Once this fits in, and then you object to it, it's going to be very tough to convince the board.
You'd object to a project in the same way that you would object to a project currently.
Yeah, I'm sure. But so many people don't realize that.
One thing that I would point out, and it's going to sound like I'm beating you up here, John, but the RB district, is it the RB?
CB.
Excuse me, the CB district. The CB district. If I just say CB district, I'm not sure anybody, even in this room, with the exception of maybe you, has a really good handle of what that is. I mean, I really would have, it would be a lot easier tonight if I could see that on the screen.
Yeah.
Or if we had handouts for folks.
He gave us that last meeting, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, it just, this is the public hearing. And I mean, that should be, that should be right up there right now. I mean, we have the technology. If you need a laptop, I'll make a motion to buy a new laptop.
No, but, you know, I have a laptop, but that's not working. That's the only reason we don't have that. That one's working, but...
Okay, well, this is all part of a public hearing process.
Yeah.
And I think without handouts for everybody and things such as that, or something that we can show, I mean, there might be three, four people watching this meeting right now, for all we know.
Definitely a town meeting, it should be.
Oh, we better have it big. Yeah, we better have it big, and we better be showing, I would think, assuming this, this actually goes to town meeting.
And I would, I would strongly, strongly suggest that if, John, you can make it to the Selectmen's meeting when they go over all of this.
Oh, yeah.
That's a six o'clock meeting prior to...
Yeah, just to make sure everybody's a little comfortable, a little bit more comfortable. There were four members of the Board of Selectmen at the last Economic Development Committee meeting.
Yeah.
You know, two as members and two as residents.
Right.
I guess I'm not understanding, I'm sensing a lot of concern, and I guess I'm having a hard time understanding because this is allowed on essentially one side of the street and not on the other at present, correct?
It's my understanding of the way the districts are aligned, yeah.
East Main Street and West Main.
Right.
Yeah.
So to me, that's kind of an just arbitrary, oh, this side it's okay, that side it's not. Correcting that is not necessarily something that I would, I'm terribly concerned with.
You'd be surprised.
Well, I'm saying for me, I mean, somebody else might have a concern about that, but I'm trying to understand why that would be a concern.
Right now, at this point, I wish we could pull up my map and actually pull up a list of all the folks that are in the CB district, so that we could see how many residential properties you have that are strictly residential versus how many properties right now are already commercial. As you know, it's always a mixed bag in Georgetown. You may have a CB district, commercial B district, but there's probably going to be a few strictly residential homes there. And I just would like those folks to understand that they may be next to a home that may at some point be commercial, even though all their life, and I get it, I get it. I don't want the surprise.
History is made by those people that show up.
Absolutely.
This is...
And when we tried to, when we tried to do the 40R, they went down with two votes. And those two folks that voted against it, I remember, it was because they simply did not know. They didn't feel informed. And I want to make sure that everybody's informed. I want to make sure that everyone is looking at this with eyes open and that they don't walk into town meeting, surprise, surprise, oh, that's my lot. So...
It would be good if the community, if the economic development besides John got up and spoke. Let the Selectmen, if they're so support, supporting this, let them speak. And I think that would be, you know, if the town sees that so many boards are interested in this, you know, it might change their thinking, but... Let's face it, we've been, me and Harry have been through this many years. We know what kind of surprises can come up.
It's town meeting. I mean, and usually there's a very vigorous back and forth at town meeting whenever somebody raises their hand.
Yeah.
Let's be, let's be prepared.
Yeah, so we can, we have the capacity there.
So we're, so we're talking about two different things now in terms of the presentation of this versus this.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what I'd like to do, I think, at this point is bring it back to this.
Absolutely. And I'd be, I'd love to do that.
You know, see if, if there are any more specifics to this, then otherwise, let's move to...
Absolutely. The only specific that I have is that essentially what we are doing is we are, we are going to the use table, the use regulation schedule, and under CB and across from mixed use, we're striking the O, and we are adding, replacing it with a D.
Correct.
Is that in...
In the, well, that wording...
We didn't put, you didn't put that in?
It's verbally, it's verbally expressed there, but the actual mechanics of what the, the warrant article would be best to say...
Yeah.
...is under the CB district, across from mixed use, to strike the O, the letter O, and replace it with the letter D.
I kind of think you're talking two different things now. I don't have the intensive use in my hands.
You're talking the use regulation...
Absolutely, and that is what we are changing.
You're going to, you're going to change it?
That's what we're changing. I believe that's what we're changing.
Yeah, John, that's exactly...
The D, oh, yeah, we're putting in the D.
Yep.
Okay, I got you.
Out with the O and in with the D.
Right.
The O is...
So, so I appreciate that, but that, that's going to, that's going to confuse the motion.
That actually is what we're going to have to do when the warrant article is written.
Yeah, but you, how come we're including both the family?
Are you suggesting, Harry, that the way the motion is written is not...
I'm, no, 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 I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm saying that...
This is putting into words what is actually going to be done, which is just a letter change.
Correct. I understand.
That's the technical, that's the technical solution.
This is what the motion is, this is what we're leaving.
And this is, yes, this is, this is the impact, and that's just the technique.
I, I know. I'm just saying that let's not get too focused on the technique right now.
Okay.
Let's, let's...
I just wanted to be clear of what I was looking at and what I know has to happen, and that's, that's the change.
Thank you for identifying.
And essentially, that's it.
Okay.
Did I circle the wrong one? It's really mixed use.
What if...
That's my, that's my turn.
I'm sorry. You are, sir?
Sorry. Sorry. I'm speaking, I turn.
It makes, how many changes are there? It's too highlighted here.
I have no idea what that is.
So since you, yes, you, would you introduce yourself first?
Oh, sorry, yeah, um, yep, no problem. Come on up and have at it.
I can file architect with J.D. LeGrasse and Associates, and that's just my copy of, and I'm here representing the owners of the CVS Georgetown property. And that was just my copy.
Oh, I got this from Bob.
Yeah, I just, I just, that was my, that was, it was from the O and D discussion. That was, that was just my...
All right. All right, why is that highlighted, multi-family?
Oop, excuse me. Oh, this is just us. That was just my internal piece.
All right, that's not included.
It's mixed use, the O to the D.
Yeah, just that.
Oh, and multi-family is still zero, right?
Yeah, that's not changed.
No, it's not.
All right.
Nope.
Or not proposed.
No, not at all.
Okay.
Nope.
So we, we have a motion on the table if someone wants to make that motion, unless there's anything more specific about this that people want to discuss.
If I could, I just want to.
I assume just then you would.
We're in support of it.
Okay, there you go.
Yes, we are in support of the motion that is on the, that you guys are discussing.
Okay, thank you.
And I apologize for actually speaking out of turn, for not in the publicness.
If anybody's interested, this is the map that I gave out to everybody at the last meeting, showing the CB district. It's the heavy pink.
Maybe if you could pass that over here, maybe I could put it here and that camera might be able to pick it up, John. So that everybody's, that's a better idea. I don't know how, how well that could be grabbed, but that camera probably could, that rear camera probably could grab it. And.
Well, it only comes to the speed, the sound, I think.
The rear camera could get that.
You may not be listening.
Well, anyway, I'll leave it there.
You tried.
So looking for.
There you go.
There we go.
I mean, that's not going to make a lot of sense to anybody.
It's, yeah, it's tough to see. If we had some real graphics.
So, looking for a motion.
I move to approve the proposed zoning amendment to Section 165.2 B, Use Regulation Schedule, Attachment 2.1, Residential Use by Allowing Mixed Use in a Commercial B CB Zoning District via Special Permit Granted by the Town's Planning Board with Mixed Use Providing for Residential Use Above the First Floor of Commercial/Retail Space CB Zoning District as Written to Forward Same to the Board of Selectmen for Inclusion as a warrant, zoning warrant article for the 2008 spring, 2018 spring town meeting.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the proposed zoning amendment as previously read into the record. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Yeah, no, thank you.
No, I.
Motion to close the public hearing for a second.
He's from CVS, right?
Yeah, so. I'm an architect.
Motion has been made.
Representing CVS, that should be in the, in the minutes.
Yeah, there's no, no secret about that.
Well, it is.
So.
Through the world, yeah.
So we have a motion and it has been seconded to close the public hearing. Uh, any discussion?
I just have one little comment about, there still is, if, if anybody approaches you, oh, there still is a hundred foot buffer between districts. So if, if you've got the CB here and residential here, there's a hundred foot buffer between districts that's been on our zoning for many years. CVS, by the way, has only got fifty by a special vote just addressing CVS. But CVS was for the business, not the apartments. So how is that going to?
I thought that was industrial.
Well, if I could, if I could.
Well, how about, how about this? Let's close the public hearing for the discussion on what we just passed. And if we want to talk about how we're going to present this or questions like this, let's just bring that to another item so we can take this out.
Well, if you will allow it, Chairman, for us to continue talking about it.
Well, it's not going to change, it's not going to change the motion that's been made till a, it's not changing.
No, it's not.
It's just a formality, you close the.
What I'm trying to do is just close that, I'm not stifling it, I'm just trying to be more organized.
Okay.
That's all, so.
I move that we close public hearing.
So motion has been made and it's been seconded to close the public hearings. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So there, now, let's talk about what it is that you wanted to talk about in relationship to that.
Uh, the CB, the CVS building has a special, that property, I should say, has, instead of the hundred foot buffer, because that house that's right, I'm trying to think, east, east of it, is CVS, is residential.
Okay.
And CVS is commercial. So in order to change the hundred foot buffer requirement that's been on our books for many years, they proposed a fifty foot easement instead of a hundred. And that was so voted at town meeting, but only that lot.
So that was a town meeting vote?
Yes.
For when, was, was, help me out with the history.
That was before CVS, the drugstore was built.
Okay, was that, was, that was, so in other words, that area was residential at the time? And then it went to town meeting to change the zoning so that it could be CB?
Yeah, with only a fifty foot.
With a fifty foot.
And that spelled out in the, in the zoning.
Should be in the zoning.
Yeah.
Under CB.
But the other, other CVSs and the other areas that have, that are budding residential have the, still the hundred foot buffer.
Okay.
So any other district with industrial and Commercial A and Commercial B, except for that lot.
Okay.
That was a special, special.
So the CB, the CB had a hundred foot anyway, and it still does, that doesn't change in any way.
No, they, originally, they had a residential zone.
Okay.
Okay? And then it was approved to make it CB, which changed.
Gotcha.
With, with also attached to the change.
Okay.
Only a fifty foot buffer on the east side.
Okay, interesting.
Between the zones.
Interesting.
Interesting.
And I thought it was spot zoning at the time, it went through and we haven't had an issue, but.
Good, I'm glad you said that because that was the first thing that came to my mind when you were describing it, something that is.
And just because we vote, you know.
Just definitionally, spot zoning.
You know, and to tell you the truth, if, down the line, if there was anybody that wanted to take it to court, I think they had a good shot at it. It doesn't matter, whatever is voted at town meeting is what we have to work with. But when it gets to the court, they could consider that unreasonable or it could be considered spot zoning and not allow it. So, you know, it could be still.
Twenty, about years ago at this point, right?
It could be still questioned, you know. But anyway, as far as we're concerned, that's what we work with, with town meeting votes.
What I did want to talk about, John, was, was there anyone else? I'm sorry, that had anything. With regards to town meeting, are, are you going to be there?
Yes.
So we do need to coordinate who's going to, you know,
Present.
be there to present and what's going to be presented.
Yeah.
How would you like to handle that as, do you want to put that on an agenda item coming up to talk about? Or do you just want to present to the board what the plan is in terms of what you're going to? For example, what Harry was talking about, having that graphic.
Yeah, what we ought to do is the last meeting preceding the town meeting.
Yeah.
We can have an, an agenda item to go over all of the ordinances and how they're going to be presented.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll put that on your to do list to.
You know, I, I went over a lot of this with Attorney Eichmann. In my previous position, you would forward the ordinance itself to Town Council for the drafting, the final drafting of the article. And this time, I found out this afternoon, it's handled internally, the drafting of the warrant articles, which, you know, it's, say it's fine, but, you know, you really want a legal eye on this stuff.
I think, I think, I think Town Council does review.
It is certainly reviewed, yes.
They, they sign off on it.
No.
No?
No.
That's a change.
Really?
That's what I was told.
Well, then send it to him now, before he goes to the selectmen.
I mean, typically, what, what happens is.
No, this is news to me.
It was news to me, too, because I'm like, really?
But they review them for four.
Something, something, something does, something doesn't make sense here because it just seems like, well.
This is, this is what happens, the ordinances are drafted and we hold the public hearing. And we also, and I'm, now I know it's me, works on the draft of the warrant article itself. And, you know, only if the town specifically requests the review edification of Town Council. It doesn't go to Town Council for his review edification in the final drafting of the warrant article. We're on our own, is what I'm saying.
Okay, so punchline to that, I would like, and I'm only one member, but I would certainly like Town Council to take a look at what we are putting on the floor.
I agree to that.
So can you, can you coordinate that?
Yes, and then, and the important part of it is, is that with these warrant articles, you want them abridged to a point where, you know, they're not volumes of literature.
Oh, right, oh, right.
You know, but, you know, they get to the point and they're reasonable in their length so people can, you know,
They're easy.
comfortably vote yea or nay on something without having to sit there and read something for a half hour.
Agreed.
You know, most of this stuff we're dealing with, if it's an eleven page ordinance, I mean, really, for a warrant article, that has to be reduced to a couple of sentences.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So, so, so.
Preferably.
So your, so your final draft, if there is such a thing, would go to John Eichmann for his, just making sure that it pulls up the muscle.
That's what I'll work with Mike and if he need the Board of Selectmen to weigh in on it. That's really what should happen. You know, we shouldn't be dealing with these things internally without the legal expertise of.
Not, not for this stuff.
Yeah, no, not.
There's too much at stake.
Yeah, I totally agree. So if you come into any roadblocks with that, please bring it to our attention immediately?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's money well spent.
Keeping in mind that with the revisions to the OSRD, that's going to be lengthy with, with respect to the bylaw for medical marijuana, excuse me, for non additionally prescribed marijuana, that's going to be lengthy. These are lengthy documents that we're adopting, that we're changing.
Yeah, that's, all being subject as we speak, I don't know if we're going to bother talking about that.
We, we might get to that.
Yeah.
So that, that just takes care of, wraps up that, that we're going to be prepared, I think, going into that meeting, town, annual town meeting with the right documents, okay. Um, so, uh, okay, moving on. Let's see, that takes care of the two public hearings, Planning Office. Good night.
Good night.
You folks had, had that letter in there and hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it and and for anyone in the audience or for anyone watching, this is under Planning Office Correspondence regard to Georgetown roadway LED lighting. And without reading this letter in its entirety, basically, this letter is a summary of the meeting, the tri-meeting that the light department, the selectmen and the planning board had and what we agreed to, what was discussed at that meeting but not clearly resolved. And so then this letter is trying to close that loop and resolve those last two issues. So did anybody have any questions about it? Did anybody have any concerns about it?
No, I think it's pretty basic. In fact, in the, the electric bill, there was a pamphlet in there about it. Not our letter, but about LED lighting.
Uh-oh, what'd it say?
Basically, it said that they, residential, that they put three thousand.
Yeah, that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was, that's about, you know.
That's good, that's good.
So check your electric bill.
My only.
Which has to be paid by the fifteenth, which is what, tomorrow?
My, the comment was on number three. Once identified, replace all four thousand K lantern style fixtures that are inconsistent with existing sodium vapor.
Yeah.
That's, um, it's just a very finite, it's very specific, I guess. Maybe there's some that don't need to be replaced, maybe, you know what I mean? So, once identified, discussion regarding replacing or.
Well, what, what the point was of, of that one, Matt, was that the, the existing neighborhoods that have the old sodium vapor, yellow lanterns.
Yep.
Some of those were replaced with the new three thousand K bright white lanterns.
Three thousand?
Three thousand. So you'll have in the middle of an entire development, all these nice yellow soft ones and then this one bright white one that's the four. And so what I'm saying is that.
Well, so you, you've now used two different, so is.
I'm sorry.
Three or four?
Four.
Oh, fours, not threes, fours.
I apologize, four.
Okay.
Yeah, and so this is saying wherever those have gone in.
Yep.
The fours come out to A, be consistent.
Yep.
With what's existing, plus to get it down to the three thousand or less for the health issue.
Okay. Just my reading of that, that could, that could be a little clearer in that sentence.
Okay.
Uh, once identified, so for example, once identified, replace all four thousand K lantern style fixtures to three thousand K or less fixtures.
I don't, I don't think that meets what you're saying there.
Okay.
It, it is, is, can, can we back up just for a second? My understanding, and forgive me if I'm not informed, there have been some four thousands installed, four thousands.
In residential.
Correct, there's some, there were some subdivisions that had four thousand LED lanterns throughout the entire development.
Okay.
We're not going into those and redoing all of those because they are consistent. And they are what they are. Now, if the selectmen want to go in and change all of those, that's, that's a biggie.
It sounds like we are.
For any, let's see, that's not the intent, Harry. Once identified, replace all four thousand K that are inconsistent with existing. Okay, so that, that needs to be clarified, that's not what the intent was. The intent was to replace the four thousands that are inconsistent with the surrounding existing ones.
Okay, good, I, I, I'm saying it's not consistent, well, it's not five, number five says replace all four hundred, four, four Ks with.
Those are the overhead poles. Those are the overhead poles, though. Number five is the overhead poles. That's a different fixture altogether.
Okay, versus the lantern style.
Versus the, there's two fixture types.
I, so the takeaway is you, you, you do suggest replacing all four thousands with three thousands in residential? Or there are some four thousand in residential that you'd be okay leaving?
Well, that's a great, I guess the way I wrote this was that it was asking a lot to go back on the lanterns that are four thousand. And the issue with those that I, I guess I was accepting was they're not pole mounted, they're not way up high, they're not flashing into your houses because they're lanterns and they're only eight or ten feet high. So they're, they're much lower, so they're not impacting the homes. So it was those two combined that live with those.
That's what I think I have out in my, front of my house. As you know, my house is quite a distance from the street.
Yeah.
But I noticed they changed the lighting because at night, instead of being right down in front, it's, it's a hundred, I would say two hundred feet it covers.
Those, those, well, those are the new three thousand K, their cutoffs are terrible, but that, that horse is out of the gate and running. Those are the new three thousand K.
It's different.
Meet the, it's, it's very different, very different.
Yeah.
Um, but that, that was part of the grant that, you know, that, that, like I say, that horse was out of the gate and it was just making sure that those were going to be the, the three thousand K, which is a little bit of a yellow issue.
I just wondered, yeah, because my house is further back, but the, the house this isn't right in front of. He's, he's only got like thirty or forty foot frontage.
Yeah.
Depth that is, and here's this pole. I mean, I don't know how he feels about it.
Well, they can get shields on them.
Yeah.
They can get house side shields to take care of that issue. And, but people don't know that.
That's it.
People don't know that.
Is that something that should be brought up in the plan? The, the townwide, townwide lighting master plan?
Could be, Harry.
Because out of all of this, I think that's the one clear point that I think we should get to them, to the, to recommend to the selectmen, that that plan should, we should have a plan like that. Because that way, now you can take out, if there does seem to be an inconsistency does seem to be an inconsistency or a little bit of confusion about what it is we're trying to achieve, that's where it gets clarified.
I, I think so. I, I, I think that the plan and the way I think this was written was that the plan will be approved first before anything new happens, anything additional happens. And that plan would have, that would be a great place to have that in. That would be a great place to have that in.
Yeah, uh, my concern is that, a- as well as you try to, um, make this fair and equitable, it, it, it could be misconstrued that saying, um, replace all four, four thousand Ks, um, adjacent to any home with three K fixtures. The home's gonna be adjacent to the next one, so I change the three thousand and now I need to change the four. And so now the, that four has to come out with a three and now the one next to it.
So.
And, and it's, it's sounding like.
So, so basically, number three, what, Matt, you would.
So, I, I would just get rid of that last sentence.
Okay.
And get rid of, and, and, and just move number five or get rid of number five and, and say, make a statement saying.
Five is legit. Five is, five is the old.
I, I, let me just.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Spell this out.
Yeah.
Say something, um, uh, consistent with the, some, you know, just speaking, thinking out loud here. Consistent with the new plan, um, or pursuant to the new plan, replace all four thousand K, uh, within residential neighborhoods with three thousand or K or less, uh, lighting. So whether, so whether it's pole mounted or, or lantern style, doesn't matter. If it's four thousand in a residential area, it needs to go down to three, three thousand, consistent with the plan.
This is only a recommendation.
I understand.
And I, and to my mind, I would leave it like it is and, and, and I'm sure the manager, the electric department will tell us. And he'll come to, you know, when we, once we have this meeting with the selectmen, he'll, he'll probably go through one, two, three and four and five and, and tell us he can't do this, or he can't do that, or he can't do this. So I would just leave it. I mean, how many times are we gonna compose this letter? I think the only thing that concerns, the one thing besides the health of the, of the residents, that, to me, that's what I wanted to talk about. But the other is that basically, as far as our regs, our subdivision regs, you know, are we in step with what he's doing or should we be? That's my question.
The, the, what do you mean with the subdivision regs?
I mean, we have a whole section on lighting. Are we in, in step with the three thousand? Are we tell, advising?
That ordinance is outdated. I mean, that ordinance, where it's updated and still legitimate is it speaks to cutoffs and it speaks to, uh, distribution. Um, but it never, it was written before the LEDs came out, like, so it does not address LEDs, which are, which are a different animal.
But Rob, isn't this, isn't this plan the, the, the base that you would use to modify those regulations?
Well, it would, it, it would be part of it.
Yeah.
It would be part of it.
That, that's how I'm seeing it. You create the plan, now figure out a way so that you modify your regulations with need mod- modification, modify them inconsistent, in a consistent way with that plan.
But I see your point though, Rob. You're saying, plan is great and we, we need to get there, but we need to stop with these four, four thousand Ks right now.
As of today, because right now, if, if, if one goes out in, in, let's say, um, uh, it's any, any subdivision that has those yellow ones, if one of those goes out, it's replaced with the, the only ones that they have that they're using, which are the four thousand K lanterns.
Oh.
That's all they have, that's all they use to replace any of the old ones. And what I'm saying is, let's stop that now, get a new fixture to.
What's that gonna cost?
They're the same price as the fixture they have now, just a different one. They just have to find a different fixture, that's all.
Do they have a bunch of four thousands in stock?
Oh, what they have, what they have in stock, I have no idea.
And then this is all part of that discussion.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's a challenge.
Yeah, this is the, the discussion that needs to be.
I, I'm happy, I'll, I'll happily go along with the letter as was written, you know, those, those two, I think, could be words spent a little bit earlier.
So, would you repeat what you said before? Cause there was something about it that did catch my attention, how simple it was.
Replace all four thousand K, uh, lights within residential areas, residential neighborhoods with three thousand K fixtures.
So what that says when it's, if it were written like that, is that saying for subdivisions that just happened, that have just been, installed with the four thousand K lanterns and they're brand new and there's a whole bunch of them, those would all get replaced.
But that's a health, safety and welfare issue.
Well, this is, so this is where, this is where I'm getting, where, where the, the health issue for those, I'm not as concerned about because they're lanterns and they're low to the ground, they're, they're ten feet or so off the ground and they only light an area that is X.
Where practical.
Huh?
Replace all four thousand K with three thousand K where practical.
Well, you could take it back, can't you? I mean, can't you return it?
Then it's subjective and I'm trying not to be practical.
In, in accordance with said plan. It's all about the plan.
Yeah, but the plan, we, we need something now. The plan is gonna take months to develop.
Well, number two would stay.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, they do.
So that would stay. Everything would stay except for the second line, the last line of number three. And, and number five would, would, would be replaced by, uh, replace all four thousand K, um, LEDs with three thousand K fixtures within residential areas.
I don't use the new lantern style fixture, Rob.
In accordance with the plan.
Four thousand K lights. Replace all four thousand K lights, what?
LEDs with three thousand K, uh, fixtures within residential neighborhoods.
And that's in accordance with the plan, and that's the future that we're working towards.
This is what we think.
I, I like that.
How it should be, I think it's probably.
So, so.
How we should develop.
So I can try to wrap this one up. Um, letter as is, number three, I'm gonna strike the last sentence, I'm gonna strike, once identified, replace. That's gonna be struck. And then, um, number five is gonna be replaced with replace all four thousand K LEDs with three thousand K or less within residential areas according to.
In accordance with the plan or, exactly, yep.
Okay. If you guys are okay with that, what I'd like to do is just make that change. Trust me that I make that change the way I just said. And then I'm gonna send this letter off.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to, um, have Rob send the letter.
Then he'll file it, the circular file.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made, this has been seconded to, uh, authorize the chair to revise the letter as identified in tonight's meeting and send along to the chairman of the selectmen. Uh, any discussion? No more discussion, all favor? Thank you. Um, Harry, I think you had some. No, that was good.
No, no, it's good correction.
That was good. That was, I, seriously, that was, that was, that's helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
What's, what's a challenge in that stuff is when you spend, when you write something so many times and you're drafting draft and then you think you've got it.
Can't read your own writing. You can't do it.
But.
No, you, you know what I have to do? I have to print it out, take it, put it somewhere.
I did that.
Two days later, come back and I will edit it.
I, I did that.
Oh, my God.
All right, yeah, well, I guess.
So anyways, you had something you wanted to talk about.
I, if I may, if, if, my apologies to the board for not having a copy of this, but, um, I received an email from a gentleman, uh, whose son is an Eagle Scout, uh, trying to be an Eagle Scout. He's got an Eagle Scout project for the Boy Scouts. Um, he says that he already has water department approval for this. Uh, the project is to geolocate, G, GIS, coordinates, um, all the fire hydrants in town and provide that data to the Georgetown Water Department and the Georgetown Fire Department so they can plug it into their GPS systems.
I thought they had that.
Um.
We brought that up so many, way back when we first started GIS.
Uh, I don't believe we have a layer on my map that shows exclusively.
Where the fire hydrant?
No.
Is the fire department just saying they don't have it?
Um, it seems as though this is a layer that they are in desire of.
Okay.
Look into that further. Um, he's basically asking that, he says we know, you know, he knows we use GIS. Do we have control of it? Um, he's, wants to do this as his Eagle Scout project.
Wonderful.
Like to encourage him, uh, like to help him move forward. Uh, the only problem is, I'm, from my experience when, um, times when we were, uh, doing trail mapping, remember the trail mapping projects?
Yeah.
Countless times we've gone out, we've mapped trails, we had a G, GPS, we did the tracks.
Yeah.
And then unfortunately, we had data that, uh, Merrimack Valley, uh, GIS department could not use because of a format issue.
Yeah.
Um, I'm asking you about this now for naturally for your approval and your encouragement to the young man, as well as, um, an authorization to use some of our LTA hours, if we have some, to coordinate between this gentleman and, uh, the GIS department of Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. So that he, so that this Boy Scout is collecting the data in the correct format so that that communication happens before he goes out and geo, geolocates five hundred and fifty hydrants in the town, only to come back and find out that the data he's collected is not usable in the format that it's been collected.
I think that's a great idea. Can we though, limit the amount of hours, uh, just so that it's not open ended?
Absolutely.
They end up doing something else that we're not even, so.
Can, can, I, I absolutely agree and, and happily will vote to approve that. But you would think that they would give us the information about what, how they want their data so that they can enter into their, into their system. Or is that not accurate?
They're going to be creating a layer and, uh, a layer out of the air, uh, isn't really part of what they normally do.
I think it was just the beginning stages of it, starting operating.
I'm sure this is.
Makes sense.
I don't, I don't think it's very complicated and there, there shouldn't be.
No, Gerard's, Gerard's phenomenal like that. His whole department is phenomenal.
I just, I just am surprised that the fire department doesn't have that.
Two hours, two hours? Two, three hours. One, one hour maybe.
One should be plenty. Besides, I'll go two, I'm not going three.
Besides the location too, is he going to, um, look into what the condition is, whether operable or not?
Oh, I don't know that, but you could certainly, um, that could certainly be something.
You know, if they had a fire, get a firefighter to go along with them and.
That would be ideal. The fire department checked it. I'm sure they do that.
There were inoperable fire hydrants.
No, I, I, I'm not saying that, but you know, they don't even know where the locations are. Um, it would be nice to also know where the locations are and whether they're.
Sure.
You know what else, uh, speaking of fire, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
No, no.
Fire hydrant, I, I just recently paid my home insurance and they have the fire hydrant down.
Distance?
Less than a thousand feet. Now, there's a lot of fire hydrants that are, that's back in front of the place. And, and all I got from my agent downtown was, when I questioned it, I said, oh, he said, everybody's got that. And I'm wondering why? I mean, my hydrant is a lot closer than a thousand feet. All these new developments, there's a lot closer than, I says the planning board says two hundred feet. You know? Do you ever notice that on your, and I'm sure we're paying for that.
Mine's four hundred on my insurance.
On your turn?
Four hundred.
Four hundred?
Yeah.
Glad to know we have one on George Street.
Okay, I forgot that out of the way.
No, near you.
So I, 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 I think, um.
What's the insurance that you got?
I don't think we need any, uh, formal, uh, just an informal support of the board.
Yeah.
It's totally fine.
How about if, if, I'm, I'm basically gonna ask Gerard what he thinks. And if it's, you know, beyond two hours, which I don't think it will be.
I'd be surprised if it is.
I would be too.
Yeah.
But if it's beyond that, then I'll come back.
Okay.
You know, but other than that, I'd like a green light to.
Yeah, all, all it needs to be done though is just to find out what software works.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just gonna be an interaction.
Just a question.
It should, it should be something that you could do in probably fifteen minutes when Gerard's points through. That's why I was saying for me, one hour max two.
Yeah, once he gets the data.
Yeah.
What does an hour go for, just out of curiosity? I have no idea.
It's an LTA hour, it's, it goes for nothing.
Oh.
We have thirty-five of them every year. It costs us nothing. And we get them.
Yeah, yeah, it's part of the package.
Yeah.
I was wondering, because I know that with Eagle Scout projects, usually there's a fundraising component of it that they need to complete, so.
Oh, I'm not familiar. Maybe we should hand this to you. You seem.
So what else is the community developing, doing?
So, so, um, so there, there are two, uh, there were, there was two other items, um, that I wanted to just mention, which was, um, there's Olson, uh, that forty B, uh, project. And this is just for everybody's kind of FYI, but, uh, the, uh, drawings from the applicant need to be in, in a perfect world today, the revised drawings, and then that gives Larry, uh, seven days to do his review of those drawings of the changed, uh, project and that gets it back to us by the twenty-first, uh, which is in our packet then for our meeting on the twenty-eighth. Now, clearly, it's the fourteenth and nothing is showing up and we were try, everybody's trying to work and help them out and, you know, they, they sent that sketch and then, um, you know, talked with Larry and blah, 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 and thumbs up on this two-way. Go ahead, go, you're gonna get a general okay with the idea, but you've still got things to work out, so they had that information. Um, don't know when those drawings are gonna happen, uh, when they'll be turned in, but that's just kind of an FYI of where that's, is and where it's going. Um, and the last item that I just wanted to mention was there will be at some point in time coming up a joint meeting that, that John will schedule with the selectmen, uh, for us to get together on the, um, medical marijuana, uh, by law.
And there was an article in today's, this morning's Globe, uh, about the status, uh, in the metro section.
Yeah.
About the status of the commission's findings and, or their proposed regulations. And it was pretty clear to me that, um, you know, if we start with the medical bylaws and tweak them, we, we, we've got a solid foundation and I'm just concerned that we're, we're gonna miss the mark for town meeting.
Uh, no, um, can I correct you on that one? Um, I did talk with, um, attorney Eichman today for about forty minutes on this subject matter and I dished off a, um, an email right before this meeting and I copied Rob and the selectmen and, uh, Mike and, uh, uh, what it boils down to, that eleven-page document that I gave everybody at the last meeting, you can toss that in the trash. Um, there's a much simpler way of, uh, making sure that we're gonna cover the bases that we need to cover relative to protecting the town in the retail sale of adult, non-medical marijuana. Um, Rowley, who did read through your packet.
He's modifying those already.
Uh, right, they're modifying and, and it's a simple paragraph. Um, what we'll be able to do, and I talked to him extensively on this, is within two short paragraphs and maybe, um, an aside paragraph, maybe three, uh, take care of the issues that need to be taken care of to properly amend our zoning ordinance. So it's not a long, you know, eleven-page document that we have to worry about and it does fall on the premise that we already have a medical marijuana overlay district defined, we have an extensive, uh, medical marijuana ordinance. So there's only references that have to be made relative to amending the language we already have to accommodate what we need to for retail sales. Um, one of the issues, um, and we've talked about this before, limiting, uh, the number. And, um, it isn't a matter that the town, um, should be trying to do that because it's not statutorily supported and, and it would never be. It's, you know, as you pointed out, you know, that you're creating a monopoly for one particular company or entity and no one has the authority in any governmental body, whether it's local, state or federal, to create, uh, a monopoly, um, especially in this particular subject matter. So what is being prescribed by town council is that within the overlay district, via the issuance of a special permit and site plan approval by the planning board, uh, would somebody, uh, be able to apply for a, um, non-medical marijuana, uh, sales facility? Um, so it's a stringent check and balance process that would be put in place. But rather than limiting to one specific site and one specific company, um, which would be technically illegal. Correct? That you, uh, yeah, you allow for, yeah, you allow for a procedure and a process and a location and that would be. And that would be within the existing medical marijuana overlay district minus, and this is what's being discussed, is minus the downtown area, which right now allows for medical marijuana facilities. There's a small pocket of the downtown area that is being proposed for elimination. And Attorney Eichman has sanctioned that. And that could be part of the ordinance that the town votes on at town meeting and that the planning board holds a public hearing on. And what we're trying to do is have everything ready to go for a public hearing April 11th. That will be the last opportunity we have to have a public hearing for the Springtown meeting. And that would keep us outside of that 21-day period where we would have to write a written report regarding our actions with this ordinance. If we're outside of the 21-day period, we would be giving a ver- a verbal presentation at town meeting and whatever handouts we decide to hand out regarding the, the language of the ordinance.
When do we get drafts?
You, you'll be getting drafts, I, I would say at this point in time, end of next week. The, the plan is I'm gonna draft this and send it off to Attorney Eichman. He's going to make any edits that need to be made and forward it to the Board of Selectmen for their review and to see if there's a consensus of the Board of Selectmen. Now, by law, they are to forward the proposed ordinance to the planning board for conducting the public hearing. And that's what we'll be doing on April 11th and that's sufficient time relative to the, the town meeting, Springtown meeting.
And it would be for us to make a recommendation back to the selectmen, just as with these amendments.
So, so, so the, the selectmen, I, I, I think the selectmen have concerns about more than one facility. And I need to be careful, you know, I don't wanna speak for them, so trying to qualify at all in that regard. But, but I, that's my understanding and that downtown, we would be addressing where it happens by pulling it out of downtown and having it just in the overlay district, which is out-
In the I-95 corridor, in the vicinity of Eggs and 50.
Yeah, yeah. And so that-
But it's an existing-
We would be doing that, but we won't, we wouldn't be in this ordinance saying you can only do one. Healthy Farms has the first option by right to this retail establishment. And chances are they're going to say yes and take that. And that won't preclude that a second one could come in because my understanding is that legally, you can't do that. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that was coming from John Eichman. John was saying it's a weak legal argument. You don't have a lot of legs to try to just say there's only one establishment happening.
Yeah, the law, people have an assumption because of certain language within the law itself that a community can limit, now I'm just saying that, a community can limit to 20% of the total number of package store liquor licenses. This town has-
This is where this number one is coming from.
Right. This town has three package store liquor licenses assigned to it and there are three. 20% of that would be one. But the way the law actually, the language of law actually provides for it is that a community cannot provide for less than 20%. Cannot go below 20%, but you cannot limit it.
You can't go below one.
Yeah, you, you can't limit it to one or, or two, whatever.
So there's a misunderstanding perhaps with some people in terms of how they're interpreting that? And so that's just where, the, the goal is to have this discussion eventually with the selectmen, where there's communication between us and them and, and-
And I read the law and on the computer and what I got out of it was it wasn't just package stores. It was anyone with a liquor license, anyone, you know, so we have like five.
That part of the law was not written, you know, in, in a proper formula type of basis.
That's the only thing we can go on.
That wouldn't hold up.
No, right. And that's, that's what Attorney Eichman is saying, is that, that, that part of, that that language of the law would be contested.
We get 3%, we have the right to ask for 3% of the retail sales.
I know.
Why would we want to? We might be able to limit it to zero. Why would we want to? There's, there's, there's resources available, there's tax revenue available to the town that we would just be-
Some other town is going to collapse.
Absolutely, they're gonna jump all over it.
Just gonna say, great.
I don't understand why we're limiting and removing a section.
I think there's, I think there are some people that, that have concerns with, with that and how it may impact the impression of what people think of this town. And it's just, it's just a difference, it's just a difference of opinion, or how people-
Right. The overlay district though, for this would be basically National Way? Where, I mean, I'm looking at the map.
What about all the farms? Why wouldn't every farm be part of the district?
Because it's, oh, okay.
That's not where our district is right now. The overlay district doesn't go out there.
But it's basically-
But this is another district. This is a recreational district.
Because of the residents that are so close. 300 feet, 300 feet is a lot.
Then it might limit it.
But the farms wouldn't be doing retail of the retail sales of marijuana, they might be doing growing.
Hasn't the town already-
They may be doing growing and then-
Hasn't the town already gone through the exercise of creating this overlay district so, for the establishment of the healthy farms?
That was for medical marijuana.
Correct, but it also was-
Which has to be indoors.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Recreational, from my understanding, does not need to be indoors. So I can understand a, there would be valid points to-
Yeah, and, and also keep in mind, there's such a thing as a farm stand.
Yeah, but that's, I think that's, that's almost ludicrous, Harry, to think that you could do it on a farm. How would you control something like that? It's all open.
A locked greenhouse.
Well, how do you control pesticide use? I mean, it's-
But this is a lot different. It's not close enough. You gotta get closer.
I, I wanna talk about the downtown aspect of it. So we had a developer here with the Duncan Donut building. He has that, that unit in the back that is empty. That to me would be a perfect location for a recreational marijuana dispensary.
Some people would think that's too close to the school.
You're in the bed?
That's how some people respond.
All I can say is thank God for town meeting so that we can modify this map from the floor.
That's, that's what cracks me up. People are gonna be worried about these little-
It is never gonna happen.
Zoning amendments when we're talking about-
We can have another subject, please, Chairman.
Another subject from this subject or the marijuana?
No, no, another subject.
I suspected.
Period.
So, that, so what we've done in that discussion, I just wanna wrap it up, is, is you guys now have a sense of what the schedule is for where this is going and what we're trying to do?
I'm just curious about the downtown aspect of it. Are we being directed to do that by the selectmen or is that their proposal? Or is that what the planning board has come up with?
That's what, that's what they, that the selectmen want. That's why the selectmen, it's just, it's just about getting together to talk about the concerns.
Let's find out where we all are.
That's what it's- And they represent, and they represent, they represent the town. So you have to, that, it, it makes sense to me.
I appreciate that, so, so do we.
We do, but in a different way.
Okay.
In a different way.
But the proposed bylaw that's going to limit the, the downtown area, that's the language it's gonna be coming from, the selectmen. Okay, that's all I'm trying to understand.
And this board would recommend or not recommend that.
Yeah, correct, correct.
So let's all find out what's coming.
So Tilly would like to go to another subject.
Yeah, please.
When is that meeting? I'm sorry?
Well, well.
11.
With the selectmen, it has to be before the-
Next week is that meeting? The weekend?
It's gonna, John's gonna try to schedule it. That's a great question. Their next meeting.
Right, because we meet on the 28th and, 28th of March and, you know, we'll be dealing with, in all likelihood, 34 East Main and the Park.
Yeah, we're not having, we're not dealing with this on the 28th. There's gonna be too much stuff there, that's for sure.
Is this another meeting that we're going to have?
We need to join the selectmen at probably their meeting or we call a special meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll, and we'll work on that 'cause I have to get this draft done.
Get that date settled.
Get it to Eichman and, you know, have him finish editing it and get it, get it to them.
You, you could start talking with the selectmen now to sort of just, you know, put a, put a whole, grab a date and just kind of-
Get some dates out there.
You know, get that going.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with them. We already had this in the works.
Yeah.
And, and then everything went to the wayside for whatever reason.
I, I think we're doing a great job.
We're, we're gonna get there. Don't worry.
Yeah, all right.
At a deadline.
So, so that, that's-
Those are good. Deadlines are good.
Deadlines are good.
Tilly, what will you?
Well, I witnessed the selectmen's meeting and I thought the planning board ought to be involved. And I hope you would support what I, what I'm thinking about. Last selectmen meeting, there was a presentation brought to them concerning privatizing our water department. And I thought it was a very good, good stand that the, that the company gave to the selectmen. And I think that there was a lot of discussion among them and it's basically just an informational meeting. But when I heard it, and I don't know what the issues all are, as a lot of us aren't, because it's never on cable. We don't see the minutes. We don't see anything that's going on down there, except when they want money. And they come to the town meeting and they need, need something and then we hear about it. So I would like, the proposal sounded really excellent and other communities have hired this company. And, and I think that we should support an endeavor like this to make sure our water is good, that it's, the quality is good, that we have enough of it and where the problems are and what down the line we have to address. I mean, we're, especially economic development and, and the residents that are gonna come.
Did, did, did this have anything to do with the water department and light department becoming one?
Yeah, that's the only one.
I think, no, not at this meeting, but they, they didn't mention that there had been some talk about it. But I have no idea what it, it's only, it's not going to be-
This is a different way of doing the water, not this, this is new.
Is this a for-profit company that would be running the water department?
Yeah, it sounded that way. Those employees would be interacting with this company. And, and it doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna cost us more because they in turn will find areas that that probably could save us money. That was their sales-
Oh, okay.
-opportunity, but it just seems that, it sounded really good to me, what I heard. And I think that I picked up a few things that I didn't know that they have about, they still don't have a manager and they've had, they've gone through three of them. So there's our water department without a manager. Who, who knows what? I know we're in, the DEP, we're on a enforcement of some kind with the DEP with our water. So there are some issues that I only know bits and pieces of. And I thought with, with a privatized water, that might be the right direction.
Yeah. What, what immediately comes up for me is the potential, I mean, on the surface, everything is always about cost savings, but what do you give up for the so-called cost savings? And, you know, the, the disconnect between Georgetown and Georgetown Electric. I would want to avoid the same scenario happening again, if, if, that's my take on it. So I don't know what privatizing means, but I, I wasn't aware they had that meeting and, and-
You can watch it again on the cable.
I'd, I'd have to watch it, but I'm, I'm wondering, is it, is it a matter that they're talking about, it would be a consultant that would, would manage the water?
Perhaps, you can call him a consultant, but they would do the managing.
That's in place of?
That's in place, you, 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 no.
So water department employees-
How can we pay that person but not?
I'll, I'll give you a really good example. In southern New Hampshire, Pennechuck is a privately-held company.
Yeah.
He mentioned Salem, but I didn't know it was New Hampshire.
Nashua spent a whole decade trying to acquire ownership of the water infrastructure and to manage on their own the infrastructure of water delivery, the water delivery system in Nashua. And they, they finally won that case and it was a huge case.
Does it ever go on the other direction?
Hundreds of millions of dollars involved with it. Right. Now, they were replicating what the town of Hudson, my former employer, already had in place. They hired Pennechuck, who's a good water distribution manager, infrastructure manager of the municipality. So they were hired to manage the day-to-day operations and they still are of the water department. Hudson owns all of the water distribution infrastructure and they farm out the day-to-day management of it to Pennechuck.
Administrative tasks.
Yeah, right. And to me, that was, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's-
Because you help, you hold them accountable. They're under contract, you know, and you, and if you have a good utility committee, a board, a utility board overseeing the management of the company.
So are the wrench turners?
That overs, that board that you just mentioned, that, this is my first reaction to that is there are, we don't have enough people to do the boards we currently have.
Yeah, but now if, say for instance, you have a wa, you have a town engineer or a person that you have, say Larry is the town's consulting engineer. You know, that person could be assigned the task of overseeing with a small body of board members overseeing the management, the contracted management of the town's water system.
Is the reason they're proposing this because the current system basically isn't working for some reason?
Like I said, we don't, I didn't get that anything from the meeting, so I don't know. But when I heard three, three managers walked away from the job, were here for like a couple of months and then said, see ya. There is something going on and I don't know what it is.
There's a need for, I'm just, I'm speculating, there, there's an apparent need for new management, under new management, under new personnel, you know, and-
Would the, are the wrench turners the actual fellows who are doing the physical work? Is the idea that they will no longer be town employees? That they're gonna then work for a management group?
That, that's something, that's a political decision. I don't know where any of that part of it's going, but, you know.
Cause there's a union there, I believe, in the water department, so I'm sure there would be something. They would have to negotiate.
In any, in any event, now, now, just to keep on dialing the channel here. Hudson is now trying to, they're entertaining the possibility of hiring their own personnel to create their own-
The irony here is that we have a, a physical operation here that costs us X to deliver the water. And now we're going to hire out to bring in a company that'll have bureaucracy, that works for a profit and somehow we're going to not have to pay more? Where is the profit coming in for that company?
They imply that they could save, that it's possible. But keep in mind that they, that probably the first step would be to evaluate what we have existing. And so, and follow the process that they, they're a well-established company, so I'm sure they have, they have some knowledge of where it should be and where, where they hope to get it at.
It sounds like it's a way to get rid of the employees.
What I do know, all I know is that there's a lot of complaints.
Yeah, yeah. This is the race to the bottom and, and we're facilitating it.
My, my concern is if, when you look at the, granted it's electric, not, not water, but when you look at towns that have national grid and STAR, et cetera, and there's a major power outage, like an event that we had just a few days ago versus a municipal light department like we have. I know that there's been some problems with-
Yeah, no, but I agree with what you're gonna say.
When it's a muni, i- if my lights are out, so is his mother's, so is the lineman's mother, so is the lineman. And they, they get it fixed. And STAR will ship somebody from Cincinnati, maybe, maybe.
Next week.
Uh, next week. And so I, I'm concerned when we talk about those utilities that are, I mean, they're not something that we can-
Go fix it. It isn't broken. It isn't broken.
It is broken, because you don't, you don't get complaints from your neighbors?
I think what is, I think what I would say is broken is, is what Tilly said is, and I think it is, frankly, has been a number of managers who have just come and gone, and that kind of turnover so quickly is not good, that's broken. Just that in of itself, and I'm not saying the whole system is, but...
One of the reasons that you get complaints from the water.
What was the reason of their, for their departures? I mean, it may be that they just got a better offer, or, you know, and, and the thing is, we waited for years to replace those tanks, and they're finally replacing them. That's gonna change the water in the eastern part of this town completely.
You also have to keep in mind that we are sucking the Parker River dry.
That's what we are, and that's where the complaints come from.
No new style of management or new management company is gonna be able to change the fact that we're sucking the Parker River dry. And we're gonna get more and more mineralized water as we draw. Uh, what's gonna end up happening is you're gonna need to get a new manager in there that has the vision to do the tanks, like the last one did, and to, and no one's gonna wanna hear it, but you're gonna need a major treatment plant to take all the water that you're sucking out from the Parker River and treat before you distribute. And it's gonna be a lot cheaper to do that in-house than it would be to do that.
Yeah, but we're being penalized.
Rather than have the profit motive driven by the consultant.
So, so, so to try to wrap this up though, I think what Tilly's done is brought it to our attention, that this was in front of, that this was in front of the Selectmen. And I, I think it's, it behooves us to then, if we're interested, to look into what, when the Selectmen are gonna talk about this again and, and can't, if that's, if so be.
I think, I think that would be something well worthwhile.
The other thing is to, is to ask the Selectmen if they could kindly keep us abreast of what's going on with that. Because everybody, I, I know I don't wanna be going to another meeting if I don't have to.
Yeah.
Maybe the Selectmen could simply give us a memo as to what's going on?
We, I mean, obviously, and I've been doing this for a long time, when there's, when there is a supposed problem, right, and it's re- re- reoccurring, you know, you, you're going through managers, you, you have to have a professional objective assessment done of the operation to, to find out what the problems are and how to address them, and, you know, and that's how you take action on something like this. If the town's worried about, you know, going through managers, why are they leaving? Are they doing, uh, interviews, on outgoing interviews? You know, let's get to the bottom of it, let's figure out what needs to be corrected in the system so that we have a well-run water department, and managers are sticking around. Managers are doing the job they're supposed to be doing, and the personnel that's working are supposed, are doing what they're supposed to be doing. You know, i- i- if the system's broken, things are broken, you gotta fix it. Otherwise, you just keep on chasing your tail and never getting to the bottom of it and never correcting the problems.
And it affects everybody, the water.
Would it be, would it be, uh, reasonable to, to, for you to check in, if the board agreed, to check in with, with the Selectmen and just ask them if they could keep us abreast of what's going on there?
And the importance of what I'm talking about with these examples?
Yeah.
There's nothing perfect, there's no system perfect, there's no perfect managed operation going on. But you can get closer to it if there is a problem, if you study it and figure out what the problems are, and then you hire the right people. You know, you gotta find out what the issues are.
And then you pay them.
Now, the, yeah, but, you know, the funny thing is, um, you know, this town's looking to privatize. Well, Hudson's looking not to.
The other way.
Yeah, and, you know, and whatever you do, don't ever, don't ever sell your infrastructure, because 20 years later, you're gonna wanna buy it back, because you're not getting the best deal that you could have gotten if you managed the thing yourself. It's just like living in a house. If you maintain the house or your car, you maintain it, it, it maintains its value, um, it's running right.
Well, seven, 17 years ago, I remember getting told that we need another water well because of the population increase. And it's, we don't have it yet, so, you know, these things are slow-moving, even if we had a plan.
Yeah, but you know what? I, i- i- and the thing is, action is of utmost importance. You can talk about things forever, like in the Economic Development Committee meeting, we're all on board. We want to, we wanna make things happen, and we're not waiting till next year or dr- dragging our feet. It's a matter of getting things done while we're still here on earth, you know?
Right.
You, you know, it's not...
I just turned 70, I'm, I'm with you on that.
But, you know, everybody talks about traffic and, and they complain about it. But I've been in towns where nothing's ever done. And, and Hudson, New Hampshire, where I worked, we got everything done. You know, we put together a plan and made sure that plan was carried out, and you have new traffic lights.
What, a, a, what, what, plan?
Yeah, yeah, I, well, I've had pe- I've had, I've had people say, we, we don't need another plan. Well, if, you know, if you don't have a plan, you can't go anywhere.
I don't mind plans, what I, what I don't like is plans that, well, we'll, we'll, we'll update the plan in five years and maybe three people will look at it between now and then, and then three people will look at the next plan and...
Yeah, my, the first...
Well, you have to have execution strategy.
The plan has to do something, the plan has to translate into something.
First position I was in, I'll leave the town out of it, they're still talking, you know, 30 years later, about putting traffic lights in and, and, and building a bridge and all this, 30 years later, and they're no closer than they were to it, because nobody takes care of what needs to get done and get it done. Nobody picks up the ball and runs to the end zone with it. They look at the ball.
The challenge today, the challenge today is that the, the world is very complicated, complex. The, the, the idea of volunteer boards is really hard on volunteers to do what you're talking about. And so then it becomes down to the paid, uh, employees, and it comes down to the form of town government. And, you know, I just, I, I will always go back to that issue, you know? You talk about plans, there's seven of them out there for town government. The last one was very clear about what this town does, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, until that one is implemented, we're gonna be spinning like this till we die.
That was written by the Department of Revenue.
Correct.
That's all it was written by, that's just how to square up some financial accounting problems.
And they hit it right on the nose, they were so smart.
You know when it came out, it was Chestertons.
Huh?
It was Chestertons, there was a mistake made, they forgot to eliminate it, it was Chestertons.
Well, I don't know about that, but I know their conclusion was right on the money.
Well, I thank you for, um, seeing if John can get some information about it, so...
Yeah.
The more we can get, it would be the better.
Yeah.
And definitely, if, if we so feel inclined, we should support the Selectmen doing this.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, you know...
How can we make plans if we don't have water?
On all that note, when I observed, there's a lot of great work going on in, throughout this town.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, I mean, there are a lot of hard workers and getting things done, and that's the whole idea, get things done, you know? Don't just sit there.
And that, and the, and that DOR report, um, specifically mentions that Georgetown succeeds because of those people in spite of the form of government.
That's right, 'cause there's enough people that wanna...
I agree.
Everything works.
Hands-on, get the hands dirty, get it done.
Everything does not work.
It's sad.
No, it's not what it said, you read a different report.
It works with a starol.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of good work, volunteer boards, workers, you know? So it, it's not a, it's not, it's not a disaster, it's not malfunctioning, it just needs to be tuned up.
Yeah.
Tuned up and...
I'll go with that.
Yeah.
Need a tune-up.
Revolly called and...
Mr. Chairman.
Anything else?
What he said.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made, second to adjourn, all in favor. Aye, aye, thank you.
My honor.